Let's give them a warm back at their club. Welcome.
Terrified! That's right. Now, y'all know I love the Air Force. I bleed blue for the Air Force because I was honorary commander out there for six years. Both of our boys served, or one served, he's a veteran now, the other one is currently serving in his 10th year. But when I was at McConnell Air Force Base last year during the airshow, I saw a red truck by itself on the tarmac. And I thought, "What? It's a Marine." And I go, "What is a Marine doing in an Air Force Base?" So I went up to the truck to thank the person sitting in the truck for their service, as I do with every branch of our military. So I was at McConnell at the airshow and I saw this red truck. And I went up and it was a female staff sergeant in the Marines. And I said, "I really have to ask this. First of all, thank you for your service. What are you doing here at McConnell? Do you just like to watch airplanes?" "No, I'm a recruiter." "Oh, my son's a recruiter. Oh, my gosh." Da-da-da-da-da. And I am a substitute school teacher and I sit on our school board here. "Wow, I have got an invitation for you," she said. I'm like, "Riding a truck or something, you know?" And no, she said, "There's an educators workshop that the Marines offer our educators nationwide, and I would like to invite you to come. Here's a flyer. Go check it out." I'm like, "Whoa, okay." So I went home to Gary and I go, "Gary, can I go? It's all expense paid. How can I say no going to San Diego for a week? And you don't have to pay for it." And so I did all the paperwork. They did the vetting, they did the background check, they did everything. And it was, that was last August. And so March came, we were to leave in April, the end of April, and the staff sergeant called me and she goes, "Hey, one of my team," which I'm part of her team, "had to drop out. Do you know anybody who might want to go?" And I thought, "Well, let me put some thought to that." And I'm thinking, and then Ginger's name came to my mind. I'd only met her like twice, but I liked her. And I thought-
That's good.
Yeah. I thought, "Who would I want to share a room with for a week?" So I called Ginger. And Ginger said, "Absolutely." So then, that night, she sent me a message. She goes, "What the hell did you get me into?" I mean, yeah.
She presented it as the way it was presented to her. It's an educators workshop. At no point did I realize I was doing boot camp. So originally, I thought, "Okay, air-conditioned, lunch, learn about taking things back to the school board."
Go shopping.
Then I get an email that says, "You have to sign a waiver that you could be killed, maimed, or seriously injured, and you cannot sue the Marine Corps or the United States government." So I called her and I said, "What the hell did you get me into? Paper cut?"
I said, "We're not gonna die. We're not gonna die. I promise, we're not gonna die, okay? They're just gonna have us do like, you know, some sit-ups and some push-ups and, you know, maybe jog a little bit. We can do that. Come on, she's 10 years younger than me. If I say I can do it, you can do it too." So we have some pictures here. So that day, both of my airmen were home. And, well, wait a minute, now, don't go too fast. I want to talk about my boys. Isn't that weird? All the time, my husband and I have been taking our airmen to the airport and said, "See you later." Now, I got to go, "See you later, guys. Have a good one." My airmen took me to the airport for boot camp in the Marines. And so we were on the airplane and, oh, did we meet some people.
Yes.
Whoa, okay, this is why I don't fly and I drive. Okay, so, next picture, we made it. We're in San Diego. I had never been to San Diego. Who's been in San Diego here? You know, that is really a cool place. It's right there on the water, and the weather's beautiful. I know, I knew it was on the water. I looked at the map. So Ginger and I, we made it, and we had no idea what we were gonna experience. This was a Monday. We had no idea. So, you get to talk now.
So this was our first day after, well, I'm gonna kind of go past this because this is just introducing us that, for everything that we're gonna be doing that day. This is on the bus.
Take a look. I'm scared to death.
You can tell by the look on our face. They put us through our paces. They let us know right off the bat that at that point on, our bodies did not belong to us. We were now the property of the United States Marine Corps and government.
I was terrified! I told my son, I go, "What if he yells at me and I start laughing in front of him?" Mom, don't do that.
Or she was afraid she'd cry, and they would pick on her.
Or I would wet my pants. One of the two. I was afraid. You know, I'm pushing 70, folks. Okay, so, look at this dude. He did not put an act on. This was really him. And I thought, "He's so skinny. How can he have so much power?"
So this is leading to the next photo. They're teaching us how to get into formation, how to march. How to march. And they're also getting ready to tell us, "You do not turn your head unless you are given permission. If you're caught looking or turning your head and getting out of formation," what did they say we do?
Do I have to say it? You say it.
We have to drop and do 50.
I never did.
We didn't.
I never, I faced forward. I did just what they said. I did just what they said.
They said, "The only thing you can do when you're in formation, you can move your eyes this way or this way, but if your head moves in any way, shape, or form, depending on the drill sergeant, the minimum is 50 push-ups."
I couldn't even do one.
So this is just them going over some of the basics with us of what to expect. Yeah, no.
Oh, yes, okay. See, where we are right now is, when we got off the bus, there are footprints, okay? And this was a very emotional moment for me. You had to go on a footprint, didn't matter what footprint, you just had to go stand on a footprint. Those are the footprints that every single recruit that is now a Marine, forever and forever, for 250 years, they stood on those steps, those feet. And I was standing on footprints of somebody who fought for me.
And possibly died fighting for us.
And possibly died for me. And you. And so I've got goosebumps. Oh, my gosh, look at those holy goosebumps. And that meant a lot to me. And sir, I know that you're a Marine, and anybody else a Marine in here? Okay, that's okay, there's three of us. So, anyway, so, what? 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 Okay, so, after we're done with that, they tell us, "Take four steps this way." And so we're facing a poster of the Marines Creed. And it is a very conservative, lovable creed. I loved it, and we did not say it out loud. Didn't they read it to us?
They read it to us.
They read it to us. And then, from here, we had to march. And this is where they take the recruits, this is where they make their phone call. "I made it, I'm here, goodbye, I love you." And very similar to the Air Force, when my boys were there, I tried to call Gary, there was no answer. I tried to call Michael, there was no answer. Nobody was around for me to say, "I made it." So I didn't get to talk to anybody. Ginger did.
This is what they call, this is what they call the confiscation room. So you'll go in here, and I have a picture of it.
Oh, good, 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 good.
This is where if you have any medications, gum, mints, anything that they do not allow is taken from you.
And you have to stand like this, because they told you to.
Until they give you permission, you don't uncross those arms.
Because they told you to. If they told me to do this, I would've had to do this. And I would've like, "Oh, my gosh, are you kidding me?" Okay, so-
This is a picture of what you're allowed and what you're not allowed to have.
You are not allowed to keep any of these brass knuckles. Who would bring brass knuckles to boot camp? I'm telling you. No tobacco. Okay, I can see that.
I had to leave my brass knuckles, they wouldn't let me bring them, Mom, guys.
And I'm telling you, she was coming, all gambling devices of all kinds. So that gives you an idea that when these recruits come into basic training, man, they start you right out from the very beginning. Next picture.
No condoms. No, I need them at boot camp.
Okay.
This is the phone call. So when you go in, they don't give you a heads-up. They say you have one phone call. You're not allowed to stray from this dialogue, and you're not allowed to wait for them to answer. As soon as you're done, you hang up on them. So the people that you're calling, they don't understand the phone call. My husband was like, "What in the hell is going on?" That's why.
Not coming out, honey.
So I had to say, "Hello, this is Recruit Rose. I have arrived safely at MCRD San Diego. The next time I contact you will be by postal mail, so expect a letter in two to three weeks. I love you, goodbye."
Boom.
And hung up. He tried calling me back to figure out what was going on. We can't have our phones at that point, they're gone. This is some of the requirements that we went through. We had to do the combat fitness test, and physical fitness, which, I'm 57 years old, trying to keep up with Marines. Yeah. We did not get to do the actual combat water survival, because-
We watched it.
We wanted to. We got to watch it, but they wouldn't allow us just because-
I didn't bring my swimsuit, so I couldn't do it.
We're doing this in one week, where the Marines go through it in 13 weeks. So we didn't get to do that, and I didn't get to do the crucible. But they did give us an invitation, that if we want to go back, I can complete it.
Not me!
I'm gonna try to go for it.
Not me! Good for you.
Oh, and we did the rifle qualification.
Yes.
This is some of the things for the crucible that the Marine Corps has to go through.
This is tough, man. I love my airmen, but you want to have a Marine in your back pocket. I'm so glad we're friends, man. I'm serious, I'm so glad we're friends. This is tough stuff. Air Force, you know how they go chair force, you know? I mean, it's just like, yeah. I mean, Air Force, okay, they're the ones who took everything out at Iran, my airmen, but Marines, they're on the front line, man. They are-
The boots on the ground.
Boots on the ground, front line, these are, these are, okay, go ahead. Oh.
So, this was our first experience.
I didn't do this. I went to a private one, because they liked me.
They made me do this. My recruiter said-
She had to do it.
So they sent four women into the bathroom. Now, the guys wasn't like this, only the women's.
No walls.
No walls. The men's all had stalls. Women's restrooms did not. So you're actually facing-
(laughing).
With women we had never met before. And it's like, "Hey, how are you? Nice to meet you."
Don't touch my hand!
So we made an agreement, no eye contact. And if you have to do anything else, they said, "Light a match." That's what we were told, light a match.
You can't. You can't have matches with you, because they took them away from you!
And that's what I told the recruiter, I said, "How can I light a match? You confiscated them."
So this is the first night when we got there. And this is where, really, this was a joy moment. We walked in for dinner, and I sat down next to a Marine. And I said, "Hi, I'm Kathy Bond from Wichita." He goes, "Well, I'm Wade from Park City." I go, "No way! What are you doing here?" He is actually part of the Park City recruitment, and he was actually one of our JROTC instructors for 259, and Colonel Shannon Poole knows him. What a moment for me! Because then we took a selfie, and I sent it to Shannon, and he followed me through all of my pictures the week that I was there. And since we've returned, Wade and Shannon and Wade's wife and I, we all got together and had lunch, because he's what they call PCS-ing. He's moving to Arkansas. He's got orders to move to Arkansas in July. So what a lovely moment. You see how God just works? He just brings people in and out of our lives, that we have things in common, and, oh, you know Him. So anyway, so this is Wade right here. This is the staff sergeant that I met in the red truck at McConnell. And this guy, he is the absolute most godly man. Isn't it great that we got to talk to our Marines about Jesus? Isn't that wonderful? Because Jesus is really our Commander in Chief, yes? I didn't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, okay, very good. And then, of course, Ginger, she has to fool around, because she's the comic relief of everything, and she had to put his hat on.
Well, an officer and a gentleman!
But doesn't she look cute? Oh, yeah, he likes it too. That's a great picture, but that's when we got our packets, we got our shirts. Now, this hat came from the Wichita recruiting office, because I went in there and I said, "Okay, I know you can do this, because my son's a recruiter in the Air Force. I need a hat. I need a hat. I'm going down to San Diego, I need a hat." So he gave me the hat, and, oh, this is great, we're doing it. Look at that! I've got good form, I've got a good look on my face. I mean, isn't that look great, Ginger? Oh, yeah, she's doing it good. Oh.
That one needs to be put on a canvas, I mean, goes above the fireplace.
Oh, but wait a minute, that picture before, we had to do two laps in four minutes. And, oh, man, it took me four minutes just to do one.
It depended on the age group.
No, they did not age-group me. They just said, "Do it." And I'm like, "Okay." So I got done, and I got, I said, "I can't do this anymore. I'm just gonna do one lap." They go, I go, "Okay, I'm done." They go, "How many minutes?" And I go, "Four." They go, "Oh, wow! That's amazing!" Well, I said, "I have to be honest, I only did one lap." "All right, go back." "Oh, do I have to? Please, don't make me do this." So I didn't. I rested, I rested. Okay, so then-
So this ammo box is-
Ammo box.
Ammo box is 35 pounds. And for the women, we had to do 30 within one minute. So you have to lift it completely above your head and bring it all the way down 30 times in one minute.
Looks easy, doesn't it? You try it. My partner, who was not Ginger, did 60. I did 10. And I'm proud of those 10. Yep, she did her 30. Look at her go, man! Yeah! Look at that!
Look at the freckles. This is part of self-defense. So they was teaching us some of the martial arts, some self-defense, hand-to-hand combat.
She's with Wade. He's our buddy. Oh, yeah, look at her go. She's not gonna tell you that she staged those photos.
Some of them, yes. Well, we completed everything, and then afterwards, I said, "Can we get some pictures of just kind of having fun?" And he said, "Yes." And then this is also part of the obstacle course that we had to do. We had to do like shot put, things like that. This is part of the hand-to-hand combat survival that they were teaching demos.
The demo that we saw. Yeah, you do not want to get caught in a back alley with a Marine. You just don't. I mean, these guys, they need to be in our schools. And the dog, the canine?
This was part of the canine unit that we got to see in action.
Isn't she a pretty dog? Aww. Oh, the mascot, that is the general's mascot at San Diego.
Do you remember what the name was?
Boo Boo?
Boo Boo.
Sounds good. Okay, Boo Boo. Oh, yeah, here we go.
We actually got to shoot in the range.
I had never shot one of these guns in my life, ever, okay? So I had no idea, you know, I want to be Annie Oakley, so I'm thinking, "I got this. I've shot a 22 rifle before."
So they start us out in the simulator, to teach us how to put the gun together, how to use it.
Everybody was shooting theirs, but mine just wasn't going off.
So one of the things that the Marines really taught us, you don't leave your fellow soldier behind. You have their, they called it their six. You have their back. So I'm, so originally, we were supposed to take five shots, stop, and then take another five shots. My team, my partner, her machine, her gun malfunction.
I'd be dead if it was the enemy coming after me.
So I slid over and I said, "I got your six."
Yes. Yes, she had my six, she had my back, and-
So I had already shot my first five. They, the recruiter realized that the battery in hers in the simulator had died. So I wanted her to experience it.
And because of what she did, she was awarded a coin. She was coined because of protecting me, her buddy. You never leave anyone in the branches, all the branches, you don't ever leave one of your own behind. There's a camaraderie, and, boy, did we ever get to know each other.
Yes, we did.
Because we not only went through training together, we shared a room together. So I mean, it was-
It was awesome.
I have goosebumps, okay.
This is them trying to figure out what's wrong with her gun.
There we go. We're out in the field now with the real thing. Real bullets, real ammo, real Marines watching us, guiding us, teaching us.
What kind of gun were you shooting?
An MR-
MR-16.
16.
On some of them.
She has hers on this, but I brought mine. I brought mine.
I got the marksmanship award.
I shot him three times in the heart.
You killed him.
I killed him! Yes! Shot him three times in the heart.
I got the between the eyes. So I got what they call the kill shot award. So I have the marksmanship coin that the commander of this unit gave to me.
Look at that. Hey, Ginger! Oh, yeah, there I am. Don't mess with me! Re-elect me, or else!
We learned that we can change it from a rooster to a hen, real quick.
You know, I'll tell you what, the first time I shot it, it had a kick. Now, you see, this is, where is it? It's on the ground. So you've got leverage. You've got leverage with the gun when you're in the prone position. And so I felt a little bit more confident, and I'm looking through that, you know, which eye do I look? Okay, so finally got it this way, and I go, "Okay." And I was real still, I took a deep breath. Hit the heart, man. I was so excited about that, yes! Look at me! I'm so happy there! Man, don't mess with me!
So I asked the recruiter, I said, "You know, this is all fun and games, but if we were actually at war and combat, I'm not gonna be aiming right here." Because that's, during training, that's where they tell you, "Aim for the bullseye." I said, "Where do I need to get them?" I said, "If it is kill or be killed." And he looked at me and he said, "You get a clean headshot." And I got right between the eyes.
And she did! And she did!
He said, "It doesn't get any cleaner than that." I had five clean shots to the head, at a five. And we were shooting from 150 yards.
And this guy's not in costume. This is a real guy. Real guy. Real guy, okay. Oh, yeah. Don't mess with us! Oh, let me talk about this. This, I politely declined. I did not do this. Instead, I was the photographer, I was the cheerleader. This is an obstacle course of 16 different cubes.
12.
12.
12 stalls.
Thank you. 12. And in there, there's instructions. And you will see through the pictures that, see, she's got the vest and everything on and the gloves, and I didn't, because I knew my body's limitations. And I knew that I wanted to stay for the whole week. I did not want to be hospitalized, so I chose to encourage and take pictures. And you can see those stalls, there's instructions right here, like, "You have to get this barrel up over this without touching anything red, and you have to work as a team."
Or the mulch.
Or the mulch, and you have to work as a team. So there, I'm looking down, Ginger's over there, she's a great leader, she just takes command right away.
The rest of my team refused to step up and be leader. We were supposed to rotate, as to, for each stall, somebody a leader. My team failed.
But Ginger kept going. Ginger would finish by herself.
My team abandoned me.
They're not from Kansas, man. We are hard workers! We are hard workers!
So one of the things that we were supposed to do on one of them was, like I said, you're not supposed to be able to touch the mulch or anything red. Well, when my recruiter, or the commander, actually stepped away, my team said, "Just step on the mulch. Go pick up the ammo boxes, bring them back, they'll never know." And I said, "Absolutely not. I want to go back to my district and say, 'I did it the right way.'" My team abandoned me.
Honestly, integrity!
So the obstacles are set up with four people in mind. You have to have, your team hands you certain things. The instructors are not allowed to tell you what you need to like get out of the box or anything. My commander comes over and he goes, "Recruit Rose, where's your team?" I'm in an eight-foot box trying to figure out how to get out. My team left me inside.
They did not have her six.
They did not have my six. The commander came over and said, "Recruit Rose, you tell me what you need. I can't help you, I can't guide you." And he kept saying, "Tap out." And I said, "No, sir." He said, "Recruit Rose, I'm telling you, tap out." I said, "No, sir. I didn't come here to quit."
I did. I did.
So on this one, the goal is, we have to climb up this and stand on top of this little tiny-
Triangle.
-triangle marker. And you have to tell the rest of your team how to get the boards to you, and you've got to place them onto the next one and walk across that little board to the next obstacle. I was the only one on my team who completed it.
You've got to keep moving.
This, this one here, you could not, you had to walk across this, you had to place the boards, but the chains could not touch the mulch, or you had to start over.
I was too heavy to do that one.
I was the only one on my team to complete it.
Yeah, she's lighter. You step on the wood, it's gonna go right down to the mulch. No, I'm joking.
This is where my team abandoned me. So you get inside, you can't touch anything that's red inside, you can't touch the mulch. So once I'm in, there's pegs. So I'm standing on the pegs, and I have to tell my team members what is outside of this box that they need to hand me, so that I can climb out without touching anything.
Who took that great photography?
The recruiter I taught.
It was me!
And one of the-
It was me!
That's true, that's true.
Credit Kathy Bond, okay. Credit Kathy Bond, okay.
And she was screaming the whole time, you got this Ginger!
Yeah, everybody, everybody, yes. Yes, look at that, amazing. Oh, this was a good one.
This barrel is about 70, 75 pounds. And you have to work as a team to get it up over and onto the other side. That's me trying to climb.
And she's gonna get out. Yep. Very good.
This is me giving instructions to my team that abandoned me.
Oh, this was a funny one.
So this, this is a tube that we climbed through. And we have a dummy that they said weighs about 70 to 80 pounds. And it represents a fallen soldier.
She looks like a real Marine there, doesn't she? Yes? Yes, thank you.
An old one, but...
How was I?
So we are supposed to be able to get the fallen soldier through the tube and on the other side without touching anything.
She's yelling at the people in the tube because they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing.
They've got me blocked. I have the victim pulling it through. They're sitting behind me. All they have to do is turn around and get out of the tube. I've done everything else for the team.
The gentleman was stuck. He had his feet up and he was on his back and he had his feet up.
Like a ninja turtle.
Imagine the big tube and he couldn't move. He was stuck. So I don't know how he ever got out.
I shoved him out.
Did you shove him out? She shoved him out.
I told him, I said, we're not, I'm not walking away. I said, I didn't come here to fail the obstacle. Bend down, move your head, I'm lifting the soldier over you. That's what I did. This is more of the team just trying to work together to build it without falling or touching anything.
Keep moving, keep moving, yeah. Keep moving, yeah. Oh, we went to the beach!
We had some downtime at night.
And I FaceTimed Gary while I was at the beach. I said, wish you were here. There we are. Oh yes, it was so much fun. And then we went shopping! I went on a ride.
We did a roller coaster!
Yes. I had so much fun. Don't ever go with me unless you really wanna have a lot of fun.
Then we went over to Miramar.
Yes. Static, static displays, we got to see and go into them. And, oh yes, there's the queen. There she is. Yes.
And I'm even more proud of these because my husband built these.
Yay Ron, where are you Ron? Yay Ron.
So one of the cool things is my husband has built them ever since he was 18. Never got to go inside. So I got to bring this experience back and show him pictures that I didn't show on here because some of it is equipment that they can't show. And this is Officer Davis.
Oh yeah. I believe he was the commander that oversaw the entire workshop that week.
He's, he is over a flight of 20. So in some of the pictures, you'll see a bunch of the helicopters in the back. Before I left, he took this off of his uniform. This is his squadron, they're called the screws. And he gave it to me.
I don't have that picture.
Oh, that's...
Thank you.
This is the rappel tower that I, I went down.
Okay, let's talk about that. Okay, so this, this is pretty high, okay?
It's 60 feet.
You've got the hellhole, which is what they call it right here, and then you've got the side. Now, my boys both said, Mom, don't do it. Don't do it. You're arthritis. Cause I have arthritis in my hands. And they said, Mom, we don't want anything to happen to you. And I'm like, okay, okay, I won't do it. So I chose to be her very strong encourager and, and, and her camera lady. And I followed her everywhere she was. She was going, she's up at the top. She hadn't come down yet. And I don't know if she's gonna go through the hellhole or is she gonna go off to the side, you know, where you bounce off with your feet? It looked easy, it really does look easy until you're there. And then it doesn't feel easy. So there's Ginger right here.
You have to use your hand to pull around the back. They call that your brake. So if you wanna stop, you have to get it all the way to the back.
Now she did a free fall.
I told him, I'm getting it done and over with.
You're supposed to stop twice on the way down. Well, man, like you went...
I went halfway and stopped and then right before the ground, I stopped. Show him.
And I even yelled, free fall! Is what I did because I thought she was free falling all the way down. Free fall, there she is! There she is! I got such great pictures and she's somewhere, where is she? Down here?
Right there.
Up there. Oh yeah, there she is. I'm thinking, oh, the ropes are gonna get twisted or something's gonna happen. And there she is. She did it. She did it, you guys. She gets an applause. I'm so proud of her, she did it. Oh, there's my pretend. Yeah, I had to make it look like I did something there at the rappel tower. And there we are. And wow, what an experience, you know? You've ever tried to do something that you didn't think you could do and you did it? And what it did for you? And then how of an inspiration you are to other people? Because you did this and you're thinking, well, heck, I could run for city council. If she can do a rappel, I can, I can run for city council. And I'm thinking, if I could make boot camp, I could run for reelection. I mean, what's the worst that could happen? I still made it through boot camp. Yes, I did. And pain is weakness leaving the body. Yes, and we had a lot of pain.
Yes.
At the end of it, I didn't know this was gonna happen. She kept talking about graduation. I'm like, we know, we just came here for the workshop, right? Well, we were given awards. We were given a certificate of completion. Here it is. United States Marines.
And this is a constant reminder to my husband...
Not to make me mad.
Stand on my good side.
Isn't that awesome?
It's the marksmanship award.
I did not expect that and... Yes, you may speak on the next one.
So in every group, they choose one person that goes above and beyond, that represents what it means to be a Marine, Officer Marine Corps. You support your team, you don't leave them, and you have the utmost just respect. And it's called the gung ho award. And that was presented to Kathy Bond.
That's not it. I've got so many, right? The gung ho award. And the corporal who gave it to me took this off of his lapel. And it is actually a pin that's got the corporal insignia. And so I asked my friend over here, what does this mean? He goes, he gave you his rank. So y'all can call me Corporal Bond, how's that? Corporal Bond!
And this, this is just what is in the folders. We got the marks, honorary marksmen. And this is the presentation of our graduation, getting our awards.
I cried. I cried, I could cry right now because I didn't do anything that wasn't me. And I had no idea that this even existed, the gung ho award. And how privileged and honored I am. I love our military and what a great time, Carl, like you said, to be presenting this before the 4th of July. So we, we have, we actually have 15 minutes for questions. We would love to answer your questions.
One thing I'd like to explain too, in all branches of the military, the coins means a big deal, don't they? If you are given a coin, there's no higher honor. They don't do it during the presentation, they don't make a big to-do of it. They shake your hand, they slide it and present it.
That's how you do it. So, oh yes, Ginger got coined a lot.
These are my coins. So this one is, this one is the, the yellow steps that every one of us stood on, that every military person has ever stood on. I was given this one for not leaving Kathy. It represents the highest honor of the Marine Corps by making sure you don't leave anyone behind, no matter what it costs you, even if it costs you your life, you don't. We take that into our everyday life. Whether it's a board member, it's friendship, spouse, students.
Teachers, husbands.
In a world right now where it's so easy to walk away from everything. You know, it's, we're raising a culture that it's easy for them to just walk away and give up. I've been married to my husband almost 40 years. And it's not been easy. But it, I take that into my marriage also. You don't walk away.
Speed it up.
This is my marksmanship award. This is the coin representing us going for the 250th anniversary. And this one was for having the heart of a soldier, for not giving up when my team abandoned me.
Okay, now it's time for questions. There's one back there, sir. I will. Yeah.
What was the age range of the other people who were recalled and where were they from?
I was the oldest.
I think I was probably next oldest.
And they, there were some from the Wichita and Oklahoma area. Is, our recruiter office is out of Oklahoma. But she comes up here and so there was some from Mays. There was a, an East High School teacher. I'm not gonna mention names because that person and I probably didn't see eye to eye on a few things. So we just kind of like maintained our polite distance.
And one of my team members was from here in Kansas, was a principal. And he was one of them that abandoned me and wanted me to cheat. And so I asked him, I said, you expel students when they're caught cheating.
She called him out, yep.
I called him out.
Yep. Okay, next question. We need to move on. Okay, next question.
Most folks in here are stunned when they find out 40% of the current DOD population is females, including the Coast Guard. Are females allowed as recruits now?
Absolutely. 100. No, I mean, I mean 100% of women can enlist in the Marines. I mean, there's, you go through some pretty strong vetting. So my son, as a recruiter in the Air Force, if they do not meet the criteria, he sends them to the Army. I'm sorry. Anybody Army in here? Anybody Army? I'm sorry, John! And my father, he went into the Air Force in 1952 in Chicago because he was afraid that he would be drafted in the Army. So he went down to the office and he enlisted right away into the Air Force. Way to go dad. Okay, next question.
Any other questions?
Don't be shy. Yes, sir.
Rose, can you tell us any more about your team that quit on you?
Quit on you. Here, go ahead.
One was the principal, two were counselors, and one was a teacher. And like I said, they, if you're, if you're going to tap out, you have to let somebody know you were gonna tap out. You don't leave somebody stuck in an eight-foot box and all of the supplies to get out are on the outside. They told nobody. Our recruiter found them sitting under the pavilion drinking water.
Okay, question from Coral. Would you do it again?
Absolutely.
My next goal is to try to talk them into letting me complete the crucible.
And my next goal is to do an Army boot camp. I know, I just can't get enough, yes! Go Army, soldier strong!
What did recruiters, drill sergeants say about the group abandoning you?
Off with their head.
Basically explain to them, they could've been court martialed. If it, if I was an actual soldier and they abandoned me, they could've been court martialed.
So were they remorseful?
No.
What did they do to them at camp?
Made them take their clothes off?
So one, one thing that they do is they don't punish the person that causes the trouble. I was punished. And the reason that they do that is to shame the rest of the team members for watching you be punished for something they did. So I had to do the obstacle twice.
You didn't have to do 50...
Push-ups, no, that was for something else.
No, each thing is different. So since we were in the 12 stalls, I technically did 24 stalls.
We got a question from the only other Marine here.
Okay, this is actually more of a comment, I'm sorry. It's, it's very important. So now that you are Marines, we do not have drill sergeants.
Drill instructors.
Drill instructors.
We do not carry guns. We carry rifles. We do not wear hats, we wear covers. And so as Marines moving forward, now you can correct anybody else out there that violates those very, you know, very important standards.
Sacred.
And you're absolutely correct. Marines, we do not leave anyone behind, no matter what the cost.
No.
So I have so much respect to you ladies, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Over here Gary, you got one over here that's not asked yet.
Again, you give this same presentation to these young kids and I gotta believe it's really gonna motivate them. So the Marine Corps really did a great thing. They've got to keep this pumped up.
I wanna talk to the... Yeah, I wanna talk to the JROTC. That is one of my passions on the school board is the program that USD 259 offers its students. I think, and this is something that I would like to move forward with, that every freshman in a high school, it's mandated, mandated that they have to do their first semester of JROTC. It gives you the discipline, it gives you some character, and boy, it tells you who's gonna succeed and who's not right away and who the ones that you need to work with. The ones that might rebel, the ones that might be lazy, oh, I'm not gonna do this, I'm not gonna wear that, you know. You know? We need to shape them up, you know that? These kids, these kids have got it too easy. It's not a cotton world land. We gotta be tough, we have to teach our kids, get a backbone! Man, I'm preaching to the choir here, but boy, it just boils my blood!
You sent two to a room, were you actually in Marine barracks or...
Oh no, we were in a very nice hotel. Oh, no, 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 no. No barracks for us, they had no air conditioning in the barracks.
But I, if that's what they required, I would've done it.
Not me, not me!
I would've done it.
The two-part question, if you did it again, would you prepare differently in terms of any physical fitness? And the second part, the second part of the question, the second question I'd like to get some insight on is, how long were you without a phone and how sort of impact did that have on the participants?
I did not need my phone.
I didn't either. Other than the camera.
I was just watching the airplanes. So when these guys would all be doing their stuff and I couldn't anymore, I just sat there and watched the airplanes from San Diego International Airport just take off cause I love airplanes. And that was the fun thing. In fact, the recruiters came over and took my picture watching the airplanes. I mean, so I really did, I did not have time for my phone. You're outside, you can't talk to anybody outside. And as far as getting ready, oh, recruiters do get their recruits, they equip them to be prepared to go to boot camp. I had no preparation because the recruiter told me, oh, if you can't do it, it's okay. You know? Just do a few sit-ups, you know? And I go, I can do sit-ups, I can do push-ups. Nah, just do five. She never, never told me, which is fine, cause I may not have gone. So that may have been her strategy is don't tell us how hard it's gonna be. It wasn't, physically, it was hard for me. Emotionally, it was not hard at all. I know how to take direction, I know how to follow orders from anybody but the government, except for the Marines. And y'all caught that, right? I was gonna say something else, but I thought I didn't wanna embarrass my husband. So, but no, emotionally, spiritually, and mentally, it was not hard at all for me. Physically, it was, damn near killed me.
I'd spend a little bit more time in the gym, upper arm.
Okay, we're done. We're done, yay! We're done, yes, we're done! Yes, step for five, yes!